I would like to welcome everyone for coming tonight and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the roll call, please.
Kellogg?
Here.
Shoemaker?
Here.
Khan?
Here.
Vaughn?
Here.
Pullen?
Here.
And Hofstadter?
Here.
Thank you all so much for coming. If you wish to talk to council, please come up to the microphone. If you're not interested in talking to the microphone, we have cards back there where you can write down your comments or questions and bring them up. Do we have anyone who would like to bring anything to council at this time? Yep, we have, we need a motion to excuse Bob also.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to excuse Bob Hines, Khan.
Khan?
Aye.
Pullen?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
And Hofstadter?
Aye.
Okay, we have a motion to suspend the reading of the minutes, please.
Second?
Pullen?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
And Khan?
Aye.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve.
I shall move Shoemaker.
Second.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Pullen?
Aye.
And Khan?
Aye.
We have Bill Resolution 2024-103. Are there any questions on the bills? Hearing none, we have a motion to pay the bills totaling $181,706.48.
I'll make, make a motion to pay the bills, Khan. Shall we move?
Khan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Pullen?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Okay, Nate, I'll start with you.
Uh, there's no submitted for February for Design Review Board, Design Review Board, we're planning a zoning commission. Should have a couple of things for March though, um, our building improvements, get that run before the Design Review Board. And then also likely facade improvements down at the old laundromat, there's a Domino's Pizza franchise coming in there. They're making some changes to the front. Uh, the speed study Carpenter Marty, I gave them the go-ahead, I've still not received anything from Mastermind. So we, I talked to Mayor Hoffy and we decided to go ahead and get Carpenter Marty going, they performed the field work last week. Once we get the study, obviously I'll send that out and then we can kick up that conversation again. The turf installations going on at Deer Run, if you haven't been down there, encourage you to go take a look at it, it's beautiful, I think, it's quite a nice improvement. Resurfacing bids were advertised last week and the week prior, the bid opening is scheduled for this Friday at 10:00 a.m. So far, two different, uh, plan holders, but the one is like a construction service that always buys the sets of plan, or set up plans. Don't look for too many more to bid on that. And I just wanted to update you a little bit, we're, we've got two quotes on the loader, the case and a cat. The case is significantly cheaper than the cat, so we're leaning that way, we want to demo both of them though, just to make sure it's what we want. We met with tech and engineering on our building, waiting on their estimate, utility department truck was ordered. Uh, last year and the year previous, or years previous, it was like, once you put in a PO, you wait a couple of months and then they give you a build date. I don't know what's changed, but they got the PO and got an email back from Palada saying, hey, we've got your bin and it's being built this month. So, we'll take it, that's good. With that in mind, we're gonna have quite a few things to sell, assuming everything works out the way it's looking like it will. We'll have a couple of trucks, the dump, old dump truck. We'll have to talk, the backhoe, one of the backhoes we talked about selling since we're getting the loader, we also have the option of trading it in. They've given us a price, both dealerships have given the same price for the backhoe. My thought is if we put it in the auction, would that price as the minimum? If it brings more, we'll sell it that way, if not, we'll just trade it in, if that makes sense, we're guaranteed that much at least. Uh, they were both willing to do that, they, they both agreed that'd be a wise move, so. Uh, there was also a salt box for the old truck and a tailgate spreader that will go with that, snowplow, a street sweeper. And I think cruiser and was there some cages or something, some other?
I had, I had talked with them.
Okay.
To see what's gonna go out.
Kevin had mentioned something about?
You talked about maybe light bars and cages.
Yeah.
Well, we haven't talked any further than just if they'd mention.
Okay. So we'll kinda do a spring cleanup, get rid of a lot of stuff hopefully. And then also met with Klein Home Exterior, home renovations last week and signed the paperwork for our building improvements. Um, they're looking at April or May as a start date, so that's why I wanted to get it on for March for the Design Review Board. I believe that's all I have.
Thank you.
Nate, do you know if Klein is going to do the masonry stuff themselves or are they subbing that out?
He's gonna do that, he's been waiting on the weather, he apologized when we first met with him last year, he had the stuff with him. But there was a bunch of people on the sidewalk and he didn't wanna do it right then for whatever reason and then he said, I'm sorry, I just kept forgetting about it, but he'll, he'll get that picked up.
Chief, do you have anything?
Our newest cruiser is up and going, uh, it's the one I have out in the parking lot. As Nate mentioned, the, the old cruiser will be ready for sale, Kevin has everything stripped out of that. The other thing I have is I have the email information for everybody that doesn't have an account. If you can't tell, I'm a little under the weather, so I'll wait a week or two and get with everybody, set everything up and then you guys might hear Bell G now counts. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Thank you.
If I could add real quick, is there a preference on how we get rid of things? We have a couple of options, we can sell it through local advertisement, takes sealed bids, or we can use like a govdeals.com that's a website that does online auctions for municipalities and other government jurisdictions. We've used both in the past. I think, I, I guess the reason I ask is, I think with the amount of vehicles we have, govdeals may be the better option. It gets a lot further reach, obviously. We did that when we sold the jetback, the old back truck and a cruiser. And I think there was another vehicle or two that same year, and they all brought a lot more money than we typically get when we just do the local sealed bids. Is that, I mean, we'll have to do a resolution authorizing the sale of all this, but before we do that, we, if we have that decision made, if we're okay with using an online sale, we can have it repaired that way.
Well, I mean, the jetback truck went to Alaska.
It went to Alaska.
I mean, that, that kind of reach would have happened with local.
The cruiser went to New York.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To me, that sounds like the only logical way to go.
I, I think it's probably gonna get us the most bang for the buck.
What, what kind of commission does, do they take?
I don't remember, it's been?
Uh, just wanna probably make this off the announcement at, uh, Airworks Auctions going on this week, that's live all over. So, but that's up to you, I help out there, so, and we got different websites going.
Sure, I appreciate that, but we're not, we're not quite to that point yet. I, there is a commission, but I can't remember what it is on the vehicles. Something, it's, it's been quite a few years, I can't remember now.
Okay.
But we made enough more that the five percent didn't really matter, is that?
You can put a minimum on everything if you want.
Do we need to add that five percent to our minimum to offset the, the trade-in?
I mean, you could, yeah.
To ensure that you would get the same amount.
Some places do.
Yeah. Is that okay with everybody? If, if so, I mean, well, like I said, we'll have a resolution before we do anything, we can further discuss it at that point, but we could get it repaired that way now. That sounds good. Okay.
Okay, Bobby, no, you're fine, Bobby.
Um, I don't have anything other than thanks for signing the acknowledgement for the financial statements for last month, appreciate that.
Karen?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, we are going to move on to legislation, we have the second reading, ordinance number 2024-101 by title only and ordinance amending the zoning map, zone territory of the village of Millersburg, do we have any questions? No? We have the first reading, ordinance number 2024-102 by title only and ordinance revising the previous ordinance prohibiting the use of freight or shipping containers as accessory-use buildings, are there any questions on that? No?
I made one, um, change here, the section three where it says the notice of the ordinance shall be published, we just had some old information in there. So, the one that went out with the packet had old information, I've changed that to be correct, it's either gonna be published in the Worcester Daily Record or the Holmes County Bargain Honor.
Bobby, I tried to reply to you, what was it we received today, was it the overtime report or whatever? And I replied like I always do, but it said I?
I got it.
Oh, you got it?
Yeah.
I got a notice that they couldn't deliver it, yeah.
Well, you're about to get yourself a new email address here pretty soon, so it should be, should work out, but no, I got it, so I'm not sure why.
Okay, um, some committee reports, um, I wanted to update everyone, the Design Review Board, um, I had assigned Tom Vaughn to that, but, um, we are re, revising that to Bob Shoemaker, so he will be on the Design Review Board. Park Committee, do we have a tentative meeting date or have we thought about that?
We don't, but I, that was the purpose of putting it on the agenda. I'd like to pick a date for that. Is there a preference, do we need like a certain timeframe between now and the, the meeting date or does it matter? Twenty-four hours, okay. So I was thinking a couple of weeks from today, well, not today, but a couple of weeks from Wednesday, if we could meet here.
Remind us who is on the Park Committee?
The Park Committee is Brad Khan, Tom Vaughn, Andrea Kellogg. The Administrator, Street Superintendent, Cemetery Sexton, and me.
So, let's see here, um, next Wednesday would be the 21st, what if we met on the 28th of February? At what time would work? Could we do it at? Is 6:30 too early?
That's good with me.
Is that good with you?
I'm close that day, so.
Six thirty?
February 28th at 6:30.
Okay.
And I just have a quick question for Nate, um, so I was down at the park yesterday and before the meeting, I wanted, I wanted to see what the concession building looked like on the inside, also wanted to see the bathrooms on the inside. So, I was to contact somebody to open that up so I could see who it would be.
I can do that or even have the guy open it up, find out when you're gonna be there and we'll make sure to open it up.
Okay. Very good. That's all I have.
Okay, the Volunteer Police Officers Dependent Fund, those people are Les Roach, Jeff Lay, Bob Hines, Brent Hofstadter, Devon, and Andrea. I set that meeting before the March 11th council meeting at 6:30, will that work out for you?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah? Okay. I was on that committee prior and it's, it's kind of a quick meeting and so I thought we could do it before council meeting, it might work out for everyone's schedule better. Is that good for you, Devon?
Sure.
Yeah, okay, great. Homes Fire District, we had a meeting this past Thursday. In the month of January, the village of Millersburg made 46 calls for District One for different reasons. One of the things that we talked about was smoke alarm installation, usually, um, that doesn't get brought to the forefront unless there's a fire, but we had two fires last summer. So, if anyone needs a smoke alarm, um, they are free and the fire department will come and install them, just call down there, 674-1926 and you can get free smoke alarms, so, let's try and do that before we have a fire. The other thing that is happening is there's a cinnamon roll fundraiser, which was kind of near and dear to my heart. The Holmes County Leadership Group is doing a cinnamon roll fundraiser to help purchase things for the fire department. Um, cinnamon rolls are $10, for six cinnamon rolls, you can choose maple or vanilla frosting. The deadline to order cinnamon rolls is March 7th and the cinnamon rolls get delivered on the 27th. So, if you're interested in that, you can call down to the chamber and get some cinnamon rolls, so that's the other thing that's going on. I received an email from a Trevor Starner this week. He said, um, there's a company that does what's called a 48-state tour, where they go around and clean and reset headstones. And, um, there isn't any, there wouldn't be any cost to the village about that, however, they do need, number one, permission to do that. They also need, um, water and crushed gravel or stone for the resetting, but they, if they have permission from us, they would be willing to add us to their tour to come and clean some of the, um, cemetery stones, if that's something that we're interested in doing.
Any objections, Nate?
Uh, I mean, assuming they know what they're doing and aren't gonna damage anything.
Do they have liability insurance?
They do have insurance, yes, yes.
Okay, well, do the families that own the plots have say in that?
Um, typically, the ones that they've referred before are very old and there's, their family. I mean, if that's what they're looking for.
Yes, yes, the old, yeah, yeah.
Has he done these for any other, uh, local villages or just maybe a phone call we could follow up on?
We can, yeah.
Just get some references.
Yeah, we can do that.
I, I think it's a good idea, I just, I feel better knowing if we follow up on that a little bit.
Yep, we can do that.
We do what, I, I can't remember, it's horrible, how much do we appropriate every year, like 3,000, 35?
3,500 to 5,000.
Yeah, to reset the dangers, or if some are leaning or whatever, we do that. Worst, worst case to best, you know, with what we have, so any additional help would be great, there are always, things move.
Well, I'll get ahold of them and get some references and, and get insurance information for the next council meeting.
What was the name of that organization again?
It's called 48-State Tour, um, yeah, that's.
How are they funded, do you have any idea?
I don't know. Yep, they get, um, applications with permissions and then that's how they choose what cemeteries they're going to go, going to take care of. So, just thought it was interesting and that I would bring it to you guys. Um, the Historical Society is also doing Clue at the Mansion on Saturday, March 9th, they're doing two shows, four to six or seven to nine. Tickets are on Eventbrite, $10 per person, if anybody wants more information on that. Um, I did that at Christmas time and it was really fun. Um, okay, so I have a whole bunch of old business, just so you all know, I'm sorry.
Could I just bring up about HDM?
Sure.
So I misspoke at the last meeting and I said it was the first Thursday of the month, it's the second Thursday. And, um, when I went to the HDM meeting last Thursday, there were about 22 business people that showed up. So the next meeting is gonna be, um, at the Chamber of Commerce, so that would be the second Thursday of March at 9:00 a.m. And it will be at the Chamber of Commerce instead of at Hotel Millersburg, so it was a good turnout.
Good, and they have a new director?
Taylor Sigler is who they've hired, she now works for the Chamber of Commerce. She's young and excited, I mean, she's energetic, so I'm looking forward to it.
That's great, that's great. Records Commission, I talked with Tom briefly after the last meeting, um, and I will be talking, uh, with a couple of people about the Records Commission, we need to make a meeting for that, do we have a Tree City Committee meeting?
There is one coming up, uh?
Next Wednesday, 21st?
Yeah.
21st?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the other thing that I have is Cleanup Day for April. And I, I wanted to talk to council about this because I thought it might be good to do a conjunction because, not for the Cleanup Day, but to have a set garage sale day for people in town and to coincide it with Cleanup Day. So that if people have stuff from their garage sale that they wanna get rid of, it would be more convenient to do it on the same weekend that we have cleanup. So I wondered what you guys thought about that.
Make it the week after.
The week after, make the cleanup the week after? Okay.
Nate, is there a reason that we've always done cleanup in April? I mean, or is that just?
Tradition, I'm guessing.
Spring cleanup.
I guess I'm just thinking if, if we wanna tie it with garage sales, those usually don't
Right.
get started till a little bit later in the, in the year.
Yeah. Could we do May?
I don't know, that's why I was curious if there was a reason we've always done it April?
Do it anytime. It's not set in stone.
So what if the Saturday of Memorial Day weekend was Cleanup Day, 'cause that's a good weekend to?
I think that we shouldn't do it on a holiday weekend.
Okay.
That's just my opinion.
I like May better.
I do like May, yeah, just thinking that's the weekend people might start cleaning up their?
Yeah, cleaning up stuff.
Stuff.
Got the calendar here. Well, the Saturdays in May are the 4th, 11th, and 18th. And then the weekend of the 25th is Memorial Weekend. May the 4th be with you, isn't that a thing? Any suggestions?
Other than Memorial Day weekend?
Yeah, yeah.
Mother's Day weekend.
Right, right, we don't want Mother's Day, you're right, Mother's Day would be the 12th, okay, so that would make it the 4th or the 18th?
I'm completely open, I don't care.
Well?
May the 4th be with you to clean out your crib?
Yes. We could do that, that, that would make Garage Sale Day the 27th of April, would that work out? I just think that we should just set a Garage Sale Day, it would be better that, I, I think we're really gonna get a lot of people down here if, if we have a, this is the day to have your garage sale, because they're gonna come, they're gonna need?
Other municipalities do it, other towns do it.
Other town, yes, yes, and it's wildly successful.
I know Millersburg used to do it, but, uh, interest just fell off, I don't know how many years ago it was. Probably five, uh, probably seven, eight years ago. Yeah, at least, well, it's gotta be more than that, I don't think we've had one since I've been on council. Yeah, I can't, somebody ran it, I don't know if it was. Yeah.
I don't remember it ever being through us.
They organized it in 20 years.
Yeah, I don't remember.
Yeah, okay.
Would it be better to have the garage sales later in April or, um, in May and then the cleanup like the first weekend in June when the weather's a little warmer? I mean, like, people sitting out in their garages or out in the driveway in April wouldn't be?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. You don't want yard sales Memorial Day weekend either, I take it?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so, but?
I know a lot of people start their summer activities that weekend.
Well, and, and if it becomes a regular thing, maybe you could establish it as that it will always be the Saturday following Memorial Day.
Oh, yeah.
That weekend, it's the, it's the following.
After, yeah, that would be good, so June 1st?
Yeah, easy way to remember that.
Would be Garage Sale Day and then June 8th would be Cleanup Day.
That's good.
Does that sound good to everyone?
Sounds good.
Nate, does that sound good to you?
True.
Okay, June 1st, Garage Sale. June 8th, Cleanup.
So is there any way that people that do not have the means to get their junk to the garage that we can help them get it there?
We've done it disabled and elderly, we've done it, um, simply because somebody had a truck, we've not gotten into that.
Yeah. But there's a lot of people that just don't, you know, have the means to get their pigs there.
I think?
I mean, some towns I've seen do like a, they'll do bulk item pickup, like the week leading up to Cleanup Day. They have, they have to get it out to the curb.
I just think it would be more effective, more people can get rid of their items.
And she's right, if you don't have a way to get the stuff to, you don't have a truck, then you don't have a way to?
Did you have a comment, Karen?
Yeah, just a thought, um, I think we did this maybe three years ago and I've had a few people ask every year since, um, a shredded day along with, um, Cleanup Day. Village pays for the shredder out there, but I think we had them from like 9:00 to noon, I think. I don't remember off the top of my head what the cost was, but it wasn't horrible, um, 500 bucks maybe, I don't know. But I've had several people ask about shredding too.
Shredding.
So it was just a thought, if you wanted to include that, we have, we would have to schedule that soon, 'cause the last time that we did it, I think we had to let them know four or five months ahead of time, 'cause they were, they're booked.
Oh, okay.
Not saying we could even get them at this point, but we could check. We use GoShred, which is who does our?
Okay.
Every six weeks, they shred our stuff here in the bins, that's who we've always used.
There's a, uh?
And they, they do our annual, uh, massive disposal of records.
Do they, do they actually shred them on-site? I'd hate to leave a box and walk away and, I'd like to see them actually shred it, okay, that, that's a nice, nice option. There's a company out Wayne County too called Sand Mandy.
What's it called?
Sand Mandy, and they shred our documents through the court and they do the bags, uh, commercial savings bag.
Okay.
They've been really good to deal with too. And I could reach out to them too, um, to see what they would charge for something like that.
Charge for a 1, 9:00 to noon or something?
Could, yeah.
It was just a thought.
An idea, yeah.
I could, I could report that at the next meeting, I guess. Do you have any idea on the volume of shredding that they did? Okay.
If we haven't disposed of those records?
Yeah.
They might be shredded?
Karen, did we put any kind of a limit on how much people could bring?
No, it was just those residents.
Okay.
Does that sound good to everyone?
Yeah.
True.
Charcolton?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you, do you want me to follow up with Sand Mandy or not?
You could, I just see what cost we?
And we would plan to do that the same day as the Cleanup Day.
That's good. Okay, moving on, um, the next thing, I'm going to be, um, meeting in March with the new HDM Director and I thought that we could do a trick-or-treat in conjunction with HDM's, um, parade. And if people want to turn on their light and be involved, they can, and if they don't have to, then that's fine, but that, I think if we did it at one time, that would keep, you know, 40 different communities from having different trick-or-treats and only having three or four houses. So, we'll talk about that later. Sunshine Law Training was February 7th?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that was, was that good?
I thought it was good, very informative.
Good, good. Um, February 21st at 6:30 at the American Hall will be our Commissioner Candidate Night, we'll be streaming that live. February 24th is Girls Night Out in Millersburg and, um, April 6th is the Infrastructure Grant Meeting at the Fairgrounds. So, a couple of the things, um, I was thinking about in working towards our? So, a couple of the things, um, I was thinking about in working towards our goals, um, I talked to Chief about the right on red on Monroe Street, and he said it's been going very well, hasn't had any complaints. In fact, people have been pretty happy that they can turn on red down there, and it gets it cleared out. So, um, one of the things I wanted to ask council to think about, to talk to your constituents about, is a right on red at Washington Street. So, you don't have to...
Northbound or southbound?
Both. So, I've heard pros, I've heard cons, but you guys talk about it, it's nothing that has to be made a decision tonight, I just thought, in working towards our goal of less traffic congestion, if we're doing well up on Monroe, we might be able to do well on Washington. Noise, I wondered if you guys had any ideas on the first steps we could take to start working on the noise problem?
It's about the loud exhaust.
Yeah. We, do we have an ordinance about that, Chief?
Yes.
Yeah?
Loud exhaust.
Loud exhaust?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we doing any enforcement on engine braking?
I, we haven't written any technicals on it, no.
Be- because it, it seems kind of ridiculous to me that, that there, and it's probably just a handful of truck drivers that are doing it, as they're coming to a stop on level ground, pulling up to the square, like going northbound, you can hear them very clearly, uh, engine braking. And, and it just rattles off the buildings, and, and it seems like... It would probably only take very minimal enforcement before word would get around, because I, I have seen at least one truck that is doing it, and it is a local business that probably makes it, repeat trips through town all day long. And it probably wouldn't take long if they were warned or something to, that that is being enforced, I would love to see that, that taking place, because that, there's no reason for that on level ground.
I agree with that, that's good. We had a bicentennial meeting on January twenty fourth, um, there were a lot of different entities there, um, as far as across the county, um, different groups. Antique Festival was there, we were there, there were all kinds of people there. So, some of the things that we discussed were, the bicentennial's gonna run from essentially July fourth to July fourth, so for a whole year. So it's gonna start with Thunder over Holmes County this year, and go through Thunder over Holmes County next year. We talked about having a big parade to get, for the kickoff, um, there's a logo that's going to be made, and it's going to be made in such a way that every community can add their name to it. So, it'll be the bicentennial logo, but we can have Millersburg on our logo. And then they wanted each community to do something about the bicentennial, and so, um, we talked about, um, the different festivals, well, our festival is obviously the Antique Festival, and the Antique Festival was there, so we talked about a bunch of different things. I reached out to, um, Holly, she is going to help me, we were talking about, um, writing a grant for a, a bicentennial mural here in town, uh, possibly on the side of the, um, laundromat. We talked about, um, well, one of the ideas that I had was taking that Millersburg bicentennial logo up to the school, I talked to Renee Woods about maybe having a coloring contest. And the top three winners from each grade, we would make a banner out of their drawing to hang in the downtown for the bicentennial. And I, I already have a, an idea for a sponsor for that. There's gonna be a time capsule celebration, so we need to be thinking about things that we might want to put in a time capsule for Millersburg. Anita Hall said that she has a place she can store the time capsules if we don't have a place, they're planning on opening them in fifty years, so a lot of us in this room probably won't be here when that time capsule is opened. So, I think it would be pretty neat to come up with some pretty great ideas for, for that time capsule. They're gonna have certain things that, that are the same throughout each of the communities, they're gonna have a historical video shown at each of the, um, each of the villages, each of the towns. And so, our, our, ours would probably be shown during the Antique Festival, because that's our festival. I thought it would be neat to have it down at the amphitheater, hopefully we have some electric down there by then, but...
We're gonna kick it off at Thunder.
We're gonna play the video here at Thunder, okay, okay.
Well, as long as the Fun HDM is okay with that.
Right, right, right.
That's the plan, is that's the kickoff.
Okay, okay, so we're gonna do that here, as, as well as a parade for the kickoff here in Millersburg. Okay.
Big.
Awesome. Yes, big parade, lots of bands.
All, all the big.
Yes. So one of the things I talked about with, with the Antique Festival, because they're excited about a lot of this, um, I, I did talk with Holly Johnson, and she, um, the Arts Center is going to put in for a grant for artisans for the different festivals. So, um, she's hoping that she can get like ten different artisans, and we're talking like a blacksmith, and like artisans that can come and show people how they used to do things, you know, way back when. And so then she said each group could choose what artisan, and then that artisan would be paid through the Arts Center from that grant. But, the big thing that I wanted to talk to you guys about was us having a float in the Antique Festival Parade for the two hundredth anniversary, and us riding on said float in the Antique Festival Parade. What do you think about that?
That would be working a traffic... I, I would be okay with that.
I think that's a neat idea.
The Antique Festival Committee, uh, Georgie and, and Pam, they were pretty excited about that, they were like, if you guys could do a two hundredth anniversary float in the parade, that would be awesome.
Where would you get the float?
Well, that's...
That's expensive, isn't it?
That...
Trailer, yeah.
No?
Trailer and a truck.
It's a trailer and a truck. And then the...
Well, most of them are.
Yeah. We would just have to decorate it.
Yeah.
We'd just have to decorate it. What?
Pipe down, elevator.
So, I wanted to bring that to you guys.
I like it, I like, I, I think it's a neat idea.
Now bump that up and have it ready for Thunder.
Oh, my goodness, yeah.
We have a meeting tomorrow night.
I know.
Six P M.
Yes, that's why I wanted to talk to council about it tonight, so when I come to the meeting tomorrow, I can be like, well, this, this might be what we're gonna do. Would everybody be interested in being a part of that? Or helping with that?
I, I would help.
Yeah.
Just not the decorating, you know.
Just not the decorating, no, no colors for you. Okay, all right, well then we'll, we'll, we'll work on that, we'll work on that.
Cost?
Huh?
Who's paying for this?
Well...
I'm not sure if the village can...
I don't, I don't, I didn't expect the village to pay for that.
Okay, just throw that out there.
Yeah.
So maybe we could get some ideas on, on the cost and figure out how we pay for that, uh...
Yeah, yeah. And I, I have a couple of ideas for some sponsors for certain things, um, the, the, the banners for downtown with the kids coloring, I have a great idea for a sponsor for that. And I might be able to get the same sponsor to sponsor us some money for the float for different things.
I mean, there might be businesses.
And there might be some businesses that are...
If we have a plane for Millersburg float, we might be able to get businesses that are gonna help, I mean, you get floats where you have people supporting the...
Yeah.
We might be able to get that to pay for the, the stuff on the float and the...
Yeah, and I don't have any problem with a sign on the side, hey, thank you to whoever. You know?
And I don't have a problem, depending on how much it costs to just pay it out of my pocket.
Well, yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with that either.
We can figure that out.
Yeah.
Especially if it's Brad's pocket.
That's right, we'll dig deep in Brad's pockets. Yes, sir.
How big a trailer and a truck you need? There's all businesses I know that would be interesting.
Yeah?
Advertising for them. How big a trailer?
There you go. How big a trailer do they have?
You want a semi?
No, no, I don't want to decorate a semi.
I know Rick Stowey would be more than happy there, they want to be involved.
Oh, okay. There you go.
All right. Okay, you want to talk to him?
Sure.
Okay.
That's Mal Mal.
Yeah.
From the restaurant.
Yeah. Okay, all right, that sounds good. Um, is that the only thing, is that the, uh, what else did I need to talk to you guys about, about that? Sponsors. Um, with, with the bicentennial, they want to start with the history and end with the future. So that's kind of how we're gonna, we're gonna go. One of the things that was suggested was, um, signs. Uh, Chris Young, evidently they make their own signs, fifty to sixty dollars a sign. But, my thought was, if we can get a grant for a mural, then we really don't need a sign, right?
The signs were for the scavenger hunt.
Okay, so that's not gonna be our responsibility?
No, no, I've already got that in my budget.
Okay, good, all right, that's perfect, that's perfect.
It's all good, I got this.
Okay, good, good. So I guess the moral of the story is, there are ways that we can get involved in the bicentennial that will not utilize any tax dollars from the village residents, and I think that that is a good thing. Okay? So we have another meeting tomorrow night, so I'll let you guys know what all happens at that meeting, but... We'll definitely be able to do the Antique Festival. Okay. Um, yeah, I think that's, okay, finally, that's all that I have. Is there any other old business?
I guess this could be old business, I brought up at our last meeting about the elementary school closing. And we're gonna lose a lot of revenue from income tax. Well, I've been, usually see Eric Strauss almost every Friday, well, they're probably gonna break ground within the year on the new elementary building. So we've got to do something now to replace that income that we're gonna be losing, if we need a committee to bring jobs in, or what, we're gonna do.
Yep. That committee is gonna start meeting in March, the Business and Housing Committee that I'm forming.
Okay.
Okay? We're gonna, we're gonna start hopefully in March, March or April. So, yeah.
Good.
Yeah, you're right, it...
It'll be here before we know it, it's gone.
Yeah, it will, it will be here. Does anyone else have any old business? Any new business?
I was, uh, asked if the village allows the dog park to be rented, uh, or reserved, like other village facilities. And I said, I honestly don't know, because I don't think anyone's ever asked, and I asked Nate, and he pretty much had the scene reacted, I don't know.
Is it a doggy birthday party?
That would be fun.
And, and so, he said if we, you said there's not a policy for allowing that right now, right, so if that gets changed, that is something we would have to decide.
Yeah, if you guys...
And, and as I was thinking about it, uh, I guess I would be in favor of allowing it with one condition, we've got the large dog park, the large dog area and the small dog area. And if they are reserving it, they can only reserve one or the other, so that there will always be one open if somebody shows up with a dog during that time, they would have a place that they could, uh, still use. So, I want to see what everyone else thought about allowing that.
Well, do, do they reserve the pavilion? Yeah, I thought they did, so... Have you just not had any requests for the dog park, the escape park individually?
And, and in this case, it is actually a, a social time for a, members of a dog club, that it's all the same breed of dog, to allow the dogs to socialize.
Oh.
That's what will be happening, so...
That's cool. Do they allow outsiders that just want to pet the dogs?
I didn't, I didn't get that deep with that.
I don't have a problem with it, I, I think your suggestion is a good one though, to split them...
Okay.
One, one over the other, and not to occupy both of them.
I don't have any objection to it? Do we need a motion for that, Bradley?
Yeah, for the first time, I'd say, that'll set the precedent then. Do you have a date on that, by the way?
I, I'm assuming that they would just call into the office and, and, and reserve it that way.
Yeah, if they want to talk to me. She handles all the other reservations.
So, so I will make a motion that we, uh, permit the dog park to be reserved, on the condition that they can only reserve one park or the other.
I'll second that, Con.
Hostetter?
Aye.
Con?
Aye.
Kellaw, yes, She maker?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
And Pauline?
Aye.
What kind of dogs are these? He's a, or he's a...
I believe this is a golden retriever.
Yes, I can bring them on. They're so happy all the time. That's awesome.
All right, thank you guys.
Yeah, that's great. Anyone else have any new business? No, does anyone have anything for executive session?
I, I had a question about one new business, actually.
Okay.
So, um, Nate would probably be able to help me, so the, um... Is it copper leaf that does like in front of the, so they maintain the bee in the baskets? Is, is that already set for the year, or?
I haven't seen anything.
So here's my question, so, um, Roots Lawn Service, um, Trevor, Travis Raver, who just moved back here from Florida and started. And, um, I got to talking to him, and he was interested in maybe being able to bid or be considered for that, so can I give that information to you?
Sure.
He's local, he's in Holmes County, and he does a lot of, um, other busi, some of the other places around and county stuff, so if I could give that to you, to be considered to bid, I'd appreciate that, thank, thank you.
Anyone wish to address council? You win.
Yeah, I'm playing more, uh, I was here a couple of months ago, uh, talking about, uh, U T Vs about my son that was paralyzed in an accident, and I just came back to ask. I was around this community here, and I met a couple of people that in town, out of town, have special needs children, and they were asking, they said they personally had to get a U T V for, it was air-conditioned heat, to take their children out about, because he couldn't stand the heat. And that's the flyer I was sending out, we do special equine riding up at Hard Boot Beats, and we also have children from here in town, grandkids coming up to close to your hydraulics, right beside, and that's Tuesday. Every Tuesday and Wednesday, we give, uh, equine riding with horses, an hour session, and I welcome anybody to come up, we were looking, we bought now land, we're looking to build a building to it. And so, yeah, I'm connected to a lot of special needs children, so I'm asking, we have a lot of special needs children coming in town here, and they were all talking about having, uh, being the U T V, uh, having license plates, have legalized, and if those come, don't, and yet any others come in that are not legal, fine them like a thousand dollars so they won't come back in again. It may get handy for special children, uh, yeah, I really appreciate it, uh, you know, my heart goes out to a lot of special needs children, so, uh, if there's an option, we could, uh, maybe see what we can do for, you know, bringing their softball games in town, they rent the ball, the diamonds, and they love to, we do special also Hunt for Hope, does, uh, special hunting, and we rent the facilities here, we use a lot of U T Vs to take them out to the hunting facility. And we rent the motel here in town, so, yeah, I was kind of hoping we could maybe work together and work something out. So, I'll leave that up to you, and, yeah, and I'll maybe come back for the next meeting, see what you got for us.
Okay.
Did you call, when you'd come to the last meeting, did you end up talking to anybody at the State House or the legislators about? It was suggested that, you know, until the state of Ohio.
UTVs are allowed on roads as long as they got plates and stuff.
That's what you found out from the state?
UTVs, I think that's what it is, if I'm correct.
Yeah. So you did call down there and find out what the, yeah.
But it's the towns, all any other towns they're allowed to. But Millersburg, Kansas, Hudson...
Yeah, I'm on your side, just so you know.
They said you have to vote. That's all you have to do.
Well, you'd have my vote.
And we're all here to help the community. You know, we open, and I was just, you know, my heart went out, you know, had, had made a motion for dogs. But are children more important than dogs? Yes. So let's remember children.
I'm with you.
That's...
I'm with you.
So we're here.
Thank you so much, Duane.
Thank you.
And I also just wanna let you know, we have, and if the police officers have any, need any help, we have a drone and we do offer, we don't charge. We help. We've been called already for different special occasions. People wanted, needed help to find somebody. We got called. So we're here to serve everybody and my buddies love it. So we're here to help town and whatever.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Okay, anybody else? No? Do we have a motion for German?
Second.
Poland?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
She maker?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
And Con?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you for coming.